Five o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. And the first item up is to approve the agenda. Anything need to be changed or added, Lisa? Or anybody else? If not, I hear a motion. Okay, I hear a motion. Got a second? To approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. Board minutes. You have several attached. Hopefully, well, a couple of them are pretty short items, though. Maybe you had a chance to look over these. If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Okay, I have a motion.
Seven.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay, they're approved. And that carries us to the action items. And the first item up, I believe, Mark, is going to talk to us about wireless.
Wireless, wireless, wireless. Good afternoon.
Mark.
Last year, I came to you and requested approval to move ahead on about $750,000 worth of wireless work that was being funded through E-Rate and also through DPI Race the Top money. We had a certain amount of money allocated for school through the E-Rate process. And we went and we went ahead and we got as much done as we could with the money that DPI said they would pay for the 20%. This year, they are allocating an additional $41,527 from state money to pay for wireless projects. So if we go ahead and file this year for wireless discounts, we have a total project cost of $232,829. If we get approved for E-Rate, they will pick up 80%. It's $186,263. DPI will kick in another $42,000 and we'll be responsible for about $5,000. So I'm requesting board approval to submit the E-Rate paperwork to apply for this money so that we can go ahead and continue to work on our infrastructure in our schools for switches and wireless.
Move approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. And opposed?
Thank you very much.
Can't get quicker than that.
Well, it's free, mate.
Better take advantage of it. Do I, Mike? That'll take us next on 4.2. We have new accounting software. And I think Ms. Harold must be going to explain us something about that.
Yes. What I'm asking for is your approval to spend money to buy new and different financial and accounting software. It has gotten to the point where this is going, it's a foregone conclusion that we are going to have to purchase new accounting software very soon, in the next couple of years and absolutely later. What has happened is this accounting software that we're using right now was developed in the 1980s for a hardware system at that time called AS400. It's not, the computer's not actually called that anymore, but it's basically the same platform. And there has been no significant huge changes to that software since that time. There are only two companies in North Carolina that service 113 and 115 ALIAs. They service everybody except Charlotte McElburn and Wayne Camp. And all those two companies that I gave you the information is to their bids. And we have to use a DPI-approved vendor because our software has to interface with DPIs vendors. So the two vendors are now, one of them's called Link, the other one is called K-12. The prices are, and the information that I gave you, I listed the reasons why I'm recommending Link. And although I've listed price first, that's actually not the driving part of my recommendation. I believe it's a better software. They have better customer service. They have more experience with an online. This is what the difference is. This is an online internet-based accounting software. And it's completely different. It's actually built on Microsoft software, not like Windows, but it's a Microsoft product. And it's completely different from the AS400-based software. And that's about as technical as I can get these days. But it's very different. If you look at the process that I gave you, you'll see the first year cost for Link shows at $55,375. The first year cost for K-12 shows at $73,061. On the other page that's called Recovery of Conversion Costs, what I'm trying to tell you is even though the first year's cost shows it being $55,375 paid to Link, that's not actually what it's gonna cost us because we would have other, we would have our regular cost anyway. So our regular costs that we pay every year are deducted from that to show you that our actual cost of conversion is $18,536.04. And if you look at the reduction in cost for the annual cost from that point, cover that $18,000 in about a year and a fourth. So after that period of time, our cost will actually be less. So that's why I'm recommending that we change software. The biggest driver is that we don't really have any choice. They're not doing anything to improve the software that we have now. They're not even fixing bugs in the software that we have now. We have, we're continuing to have issues that because it's a dead software, they're never gonna sell it new to anybody else anymore. They're just not fixing it.
So, and where's, which budget does this money, where's it come from?
Our operating budget.
Just out of the operating budget, and we're okay on that?
I'm sorry?
And that's, we can cover that. Which I guess you have to, anyway, for the most part of it. You have no choice. Any questions for Ms. Harold about this? Which does, I think when she said we have to, does that sound like it was?
You might not have to write the specific minute. But eventually, we don't have any choice. And my recommendation is because it's creating a lot of problems for us right now internally.
And the training, do you go, or does everybody in your finance department go?
They've actually come here to do the initial training. Three days comes with the package. I will tell you, I added an additional two days into the quote that I gave you just 'cause I feel like our bookkeepers and that we have out in the schools are gonna need some additional help and things.
It's a good idea.
So I've tried to cover the bases as to what we, what we need.
We have three side loads.
Yeah, so I was saying the annual fee was also included in that.
The, in the first year, yes. For Link, they included the annual fee in that first year, in their price. Yes, they did.
Yep. Had to turn my head sideways to see if I could see it. Now, I have no other question, but does anyone else?
Is this something that's gonna take place immediately?
As soon as we can get it approved, if y'all decide to approve it tonight, then I will contact them. And right now, we're on their schedule for the conversion to happen in May. So they will do, come in and convert all our data and do our training in May. And we will probably run a payroll with the new software either May or June with this one, yeah.
What's the board's plan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second. Any last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. That's, that's it. You're done. And now you get to stay right here with us for a second. And I see you're an auditor's contract.
Yes. This is, we're required by North Carolina law to have an audit, an outside auditor every year. This is our annual contract for the audit for fiscal year 2015-16. We have to have it signed and sent to the local government commission before the auditors come in and do. People come in at the end of May, so we got this to the local government commission. The contract is with, they have been our auditors since 2005. We're probably gonna have to look before too long, probably next year, possibly doing a bid or a few or something, 'cause LGC does like you to change them once in a while. But for this year, they're the same auditors. It's basically the same contract. The price is about the same. The contract price is $37,500. And then they say in there that they may have to charge us for things that are outside of that. Last year, we paid $1,300,000. So it's about the same difference.
And that's already taken into consideration with our, our money.
It's in the budget. It is in the budget.
Many do we do it, if you have to do that?
Ms. Harold?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If not, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you, Ms. Harold.
Thank you.
And that carries us to capital budget. And I see several attachments. I don't know if in order you want us to open them or not.
Mr.?
Yeah, I would first say capital. The capital update is the one where you just correct written out. That's what you're looking at.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Start with the current projects in progress. PS Jones concession stand. DBNH still has a minor punch list. The water dispensers were ordered wrong. They put the wrong type. They actually put the condition. Don't decide to build them. It was cost to be water dispensers. So they have to be reordered and changed out. And the mule work is being replaced in the concession stand due to it being specked and built out of particle board and it didn't be out of something this high water related. So Harold, having that redone. PS Jones expansion joints were installed over the Easter break. They are back today and finishing as we speak. They're on site finishing that project. Eastern Elementary multipurpose building has come along great. The exterior is basically finished. Interior level studs and framing have been completed. Sprinker over here roof in was completed. Ducks, electrical and plumbing roof in will be completed this week, by Friday. And they're planning to start hanging sheet rock in the morning.
Yeah, stopped by there one day. It actually looks like a building.
Yes, sir. We actually take, before the Easter break, we took the staff that was available. And Ms. Walker went in and gave them a tour of the facility. Quite enormous when you go inside.
Yeah, very, very nice, you know, very nice for what it is.
Yes.
On the PS Jones concession stand, you said the mule work's being replaced because it was specked and?
It was specked, that's particle board, and installed as particle board.
Who's paying for the difference?
DBNH. Brad said he would eat it then. That's what it was there, and he should've known better. He should've saw it and called it before they ordered it. Chalk Wendy Middle School 100 building, window replacement was done over the Easter break. The emergency escape windows that were sent were wrong. The contractor will come back and exchange the windows once they have arrived. Estimated three-week delivery. And what it is, it's supposed to be a single-action flip-out window, and they are crank-out. But they do fold all the way out so the kids can get out in the vent. It's not holding them out, but they will be changed out. PS Jones ball field plant operations, we've been working with Mr. Cash, Cashin, the athletic director. We've helped put down clay on the field. We're planning to put down some French drains once the season's finished up. And we're also planning to do some top dressing through the season. Try to help level out the field and increase the drainage by adding some sand.
So that's, you know, you and I have been talking about that, 'cause I kept getting calls about it. Is that?
That's the same thing, yes, sir. I think it's all, everybody's happy.
They're taking care of it?
Yes, sir.
Well, having received a call in the last few weeks, I guess it must be okay. But I just wanna make sure. I know they've got more than one ball field.
Yes, sir. That's what we're working with.
Okay.
Northside High School concession stand is 100% completed exterior. On interior, they have a few minor things. The carpentry class, Northside High School carpentry class is gonna build a room, storage room upstairs and add some shelving, but it looks quite nice. And they are currently using it. Washington High School concrete pads on the outside corners. We had Davis Concrete over the Easter holiday to form up 27 four-by-four pads to prevent the erosion of the foundation. We have planned to form them this week, but with the cold weather coming tonight and then rain Thursday, we put them off for another week. So they're formed and ready. Southside High School track erosion. Materials are on site. Sinclair Trucking is scheduled to start Wednesday, which is tomorrow. Southside High School administration is aware of the work will be going on during school hours, and it will not interfere with any track or anything like that. So the work they're doing is outside.
How they gonna get all that dirt in there?
Down our access road in there, it's gonna be a lot of traffic. Yes, right through the middle between the football and the baseball, we have that road. So be a lot of traffic.
Hope it doesn't rain too much.
Well, that's what's held us up all along. Right now, it's dry enough. We hope it'll get enough Thursday to interfere with it, but.
It's wet all the time.
Yep. Very, very wet. Eastern Elementary Pod Two bathrooms. The bathrooms are operational and back in service, but we're still waiting on the replacement steel doors and frame pieces to arrive. Plant operations will be doing this work. These are having to be specially made due to their size and also the frame repair kits. These are doors that are roughly nine foot tall. These are extremely tall doors and narrow doors. And the frames that are in place are no longer the back set and the stop and the jab. They don't, they did not make frames that way. So we had to have them custom-made, some covers to fix some problems at the bottom. Eastern Elementary Pod One, Two, Three, Pod One Through Three enclosure. MHA Works is preparing the contract. Amber Idol is planning to deliver the contract tomorrow and be signed. Their plan is to have the project design and bid for construction so we can start construction as soon as school is out. John Cotton Taylor, we have ordered the replacement barge units for the cafeteria. They will be installed with plant operations. We're about a four-week lead on those units. They were five-ton barge, their biggest barge units that we have. I've met with three of the soundproofing companies, and they were looking at giving us quotes on the soundproofing at Chalk Wendy Middle School, band room, Southside High School gym and band room. And once we assign a project number, those bids will be in. Southside Cupola repairs is scheduled to start June 20th. And that's the week after school's out. We're giving the staff a week to get out before we, most all glass goes outside, but we don't wanna have a liability of something falling down on the inside while somebody's in the building. Any questions? A lot going on.
Yep.
Completed projects, Washington High School Field House. Punch list has been completed, and they turned over the construction keys to plant operations on Friday with a final walk-around. Plant operations worked before the holidays to arrange transportation and assistance in the planting of 16 live oaks on the Northeast Elementary Campus. And there is a young gentleman that is taking it as his Eagle Scout project to maintain and keep those trees up for the first year. So maybe they'll make it.
Those are those trees that the gentleman donated, or whatever?
Mr. Worley?
Mr. Worley, yes, correct.
On the Field House, since it's, when we say it's complete, is that, we're done with our part of that? I mean, I know there was a local, you know?
We haven't received the final billings and everything, so we're still waiting on that. But we came in under our budget. They still owe us a credit, a change order for the metal roof and one other. I forgot, the sewer change, the sewer, the downsides from cast iron to plastic, so.
What were they doing on the inside as far as the lockers and things? I know there was some discussion with the group that raised their money.
Athletic boosters is, they have ordered the weight equipment. They are putting rubber floor down. They are putting epoxy floor in the locker rooms. They have ordered the lockers.
So they'll have everything?
Yes, basically interior. And I think they still had a little bit of money planned left available. And I think they were planning to buy some office furniture if it allowed.
And you poured concrete in front going towards the track?
Yeah, I didn't, but that went on here.
You ever mention that?
I think they're trying to get stuff in Mr. Malt's training room. Some, not just furniture, but tables like for an injured player, you know, will be able to. Some little things that I think they're gonna try to do and see what's left.
They talked about possibly a stereo system or something for the, just for the weight room to help the guys while they're working out.
And that was a question I asked when she was in. I was asking, was there anything that they were not going to have that they needed that we have covered so we could talk about it when they get through with the next step?
I'm sure that the final punch list, has that been done? The final punch list?
Yes, ma'am. It's our building. Yep. We went around and did the, we did the punch list, and it was completed, and we inspected it Friday.
Okay, so the things we had to do?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Well, there was probably 10 or 15 items they had to do once we walked around. Dr. Fitz and I and Russ and Ms. Walker, several of them were out there that we walked around along with architect, he was here that day and walked and made sure everything was correct as he had specked and drawn. So he actually, John McGahey created the list. He was the writer of the list and the keeper of it.
It had been mentioned about that different folks wanted a ribbon cutting. Were you, was that something you were gonna handle, setting up, or?
I've been talking with Ms. Walker. We wanted to have it look, have something in the building besides the empty hollow shell right now and not planning to be used until truly, you know, next school year. So we got a little time, so they're not pushing. We'd like to do it before the end of the school year. So the kids that are there get to see it and get a chance to go in, so. One thing that we did do over the Easter that I did not put on my list, we poured the concrete with the part of the $5,000 you gave us. We did pour that over the Easter break to tie the building to the track. So that part's been done, so.
Gotcha.
And final colors on that turned out great. I think the combination looked really good.
I know that's one of the other things, if there's something left, the two concession stands that need to be painted anyway, that they would get the same paint colors and just make sure all three of those things, ma'am.
It's kind of our plan over the summer.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Get our community service workers and do some of that stuff. Move on to my project requesting, pressing approval for the permission to obtain bids on a new access road. That's your second, that's the drawing that's in there. And that's the access road that the City of Washington's Fire Marshal is requiring before we can occupy the building, that campus. We talked about in some of our other meetings and stuff, that does not have access to the rear of the campus. And they're requiring us to do that before we can open this new part, so.
We'd actually talked about this, but we didn't take any action on it.
Yeah, we just had to hold for now.
We just hold it for now.
So now we're asking?
But our windows getting closed, and we probably got a, you know, 30, 45-day window, you know, to get the road built. And so with y'all's permission, I would like to obtain bids and bring it back to y'all.
I guess just to make it official, we take a vote on it then? I mean, just asking for bids. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Move approved.
Second. Got a motion?
Jinx on you, Mike.
Two motions in one second, I think, to just ask for the bids. All in favor, say aye. And opposed to that?
And if I may add, they donated their time and stuff. They basically bid it out on the project, Arc, whatever their name of their company is, their official name, Mr. Scott. Anyway, he donated his time here, the Arc, Arc Consulting Group, PLC. They did that actual design for us, being it was a hidden, no thing, and it didn't get caught prior to, so.
I wanna ask you a few questions about some of these others. I'm gonna jump out of order.
Yes, sir.
If you have a file, open up your 1314 capital budget, not the, not the one in, yeah. I'm gonna go by year, 13, 14, 15, 16, you know, do it that way. And there were some items, just to comment, not even a question for you. On the 1314, there was one item that had been brought forward already, the road issue for CMS. And I'm just mentioning it 'cause I'd asked, I told the board the other night I might bring it up to have them do something about that. That's actually already been put on a capital list for which, is it 1516? Yeah, 1516. Right. So there's no action needs to be taken, so I don't need to ask you anything on that. So that should clear, and Lisa, I believe, said, meeting with Ms. Harold somehow, we're gonna look at the safety and security balance here to make sure that gets brought in. So 1314 should be clear. We shouldn't have any question about that. That, I'm trying, what I'm doing, folks, is trying to get us to the current capital, clear up everything in the past. The 1415 list, I showed some projects here that still shows they haven't been done, but I thought maybe they had been. Or, I know you don't have it burnout, though, do you? But as one says, landscaping at CMS.
That project is, we took care of it once we got our power rate. There was no funds used from that.
I was thinking some of this stuff had already been done. Yeah, there's a copy. Some of this, I mean, like it snowed in the drainage system. I was thinking we had done that, but maybe we haven't.
No, sir. We've done some minor work, but we need to take the excavator back between the main building and the gymnasium. We need to put a piece of tile in, but we were waiting for the kids to get out of school, to get in there, and it'd been too wet earlier. So hope just soon as we have some dry weather and we can get down there, 'cause that's a wet school, too.
Okay. How about the $3,300 on the Washington High School T8 says performance contract? Because that's, we don't need to worry about that now. That's, who knows when that's gonna ever happen, if it ever happens?
What that is, is a safety guard is required for the light fixtures. And we were hoping once they changed the fixtures.
So was it done, not done?
Not done. Has not been done.
That needs to be done. We're waiting on the performance contract to see if it could be wrapped up, since we're not.
Yeah, we're not gonna get it on performance contract, so we need to go ahead and take care of that.
And I've assigned it a project number.
Concrete pads. We talked about so many concrete pads, I don't know which one.
Which, the ones we framed up over Easter, yes, sir. Yep, 27 of them.
That takes me to the CMS 24,000 bus parking, which was tied to the 57,000 that has already been brought forward. What I was gonna suggest, if we could, Don, can this also be brought to the 1516 on whole item? Because we moved the 57,000 for doing access road to the whole. Because remember, there were some items we had to put on whole to make room for the Eastern bathroom project. So why, can we do that with this one? And then that'll clean that off of this sheet here. So we won't have to discuss it again. And.
And what's that, Jim, what's that?
That's $24,000. It says CMS bus parking lot.
Was that the gravel parking lot?
That was the gravel parking lot. That was to be built out there in the grassy where the old junior high building used to be.
And so what we had done, there were some items that we had to put on whole to make money room, I'm gonna call it money room, for the Eastern project. This is one that's tied to one of those that's already been moved over, was 57,000. So this could just be put on whole, is what, I seen Ms. Harold looking at me. I guess that can be done. Okay, okay. To with the others, and that'll take it off of this sheet and bring it to the current sheet. So we can follow it from there. And that leaves nothing but the tile replacement. I don't know which one that is at Bath. I don't know what that was. Says scheduled during school break. So since it was 14, 1314?
It's the 400 building.
Is that the one that's done?
No, sir. It has not been done yet.
Okay, what, does anybody, I'll be honest, we're just passing that. I don't even remember what it was.
It's the 400 building in the back. And we've got some question about whether or not our VersaShield is actually doing what it was designed to do. So we kinda put it on hold to see, and the VersaShield folks are supposed to be coming to look and see, you know, if they can recommend what we need to do or if the product's doing what it's supposed to be doing or not doing. I know Mr. Randy was involved in some of it before I came here with Danny and a test they did at Northside High School on the original thing. So there's really a question. That's why it had just been put on the back burner, but.
Okay, well.
It needs to be done. That's that, building the computer rooms and.
Yeah, just somehow, we need to clear these off. I don't wanna present a 1617 plan to the commissioners when I still have an outstanding 1415 plan. Sensible? Does that make sense to anybody other than me? Okay. So, yeah, come, come back to us in a few weeks and let us know where we're at on that. And last but not least, the 1516 capital list. And everybody wants to pull it up. Well, now I pulled it up. I had to make it larger in my eyes when I see it. There we go.
What we're looking at here, too, you'll see under status that several of these items are completed, and several don't have anything there. We've asked Stan to go back with the bid process. As you all recall, we talked about, we wanna make sure that we're receiving the bids that are sealed so that anything we had, we just shred it and have started over with that. So we should have everything that's not completed, that's not being done in-house. We should have bids submitted and in hand, hopefully in the next 10 days. And then you'll see many of these projects be taken care of in a short period of time.
Okay, and that's, okay, yeah, you've gotten ahead of me, but that's great. That was actually what I was gonna ask you about, 'cause at the February meeting, there were three items brought to us for ownings at, I know one was CPS Bath and who knows what the other was?
Tailor.
Uh, Northside. It was, and was tailored to. Well, that was a different one, though. It was three brought to us at that meeting that had bids, Stan members, which one? And actually, I believe it was you, Carolyn, that questioned, asking DPI about some of the wind. Right.
DPI does not govern, but they referred me to local jurisdiction. DPI does not govern, but they referred me to local jurisdiction, talked to city and county, and they both say it's had to meet the wind zone. I think it's three hundred and ten miles per hour, so we'll have to send those back out for rebid.
And that was all I was going to say. I knew you had done that. I just wanted them to hear that and hear you say, send them back out for bid, so we can get those taken care of.
Been working on getting my project list together. I've just about finished it today. So we'll, we'll have it up and numbered by tomorrow morning lunch, and then we'll be sending them out with.
So DPI wants you to go by the city and county code?
Yes, they said they didn't govern, talked to local jurisdiction. When I called Alan Pittman, he read out the state law book where anything over public walkways is required to meet that. So it's a public walkway, so.
That's what I thought, and I didn't want to send trouble.
Okay, so, I mean, that was what I wanted to cover on here. Does anybody have a project on here they need to ask about or anything?
The soundproofing in the band, I mean, that sound like that would have been something easy to do. Why is that still not done?
Well, we had the bids on it ready to submit, but once we started this, we've stopped everything, so.
Let's see if we can turn as many whites into yellows before I have, that's the only way I know how to say it.
Yeah, that's our plan. Over the next ten days.
When I get in front of these commissioners, I want as much stuff as, a plan for as much as I can have.
We hope to do it and have POs issued.
All right, okay.
Just soon as y'all approve.
I have no more questions on that. Was anything we need to look at on the eastern? That was just a picture or something? Is that all it was? I'm trying to say.
That fire line?
Eastern, it was a picture of the fire driveway, posed driveway, yes, sir. The, the city was requiring a turnaround where they can pull in and back into the school.
Wherever they say it's got to be, is where it's going to go.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Uh, field trips.
Have three of them for you, the pretty cut and dry. First one's eighty-one forty-two, Northside, June the twenty-first through the twenty-third. The FFA State Competition to Raleigh. They'd be taking an activity bus. The second one is eighty-four eighteen, Northeast on the twenty-second through the twenty-third of April. The Science Olympiad State Conference. And here we have one male and three females. And the one male student has a parent, male parent, who's going to be attending with him, and they'll be taking the minivan. And then the next one should be eighty-four forty is the number, and that's at Northeast. And it's the twenty-ninth through the thirtieth of April, the Envirothon team to Burlington for that state competition they normally attend. Again, the number of chaperones and students is appropriate, and they'll be taking an activity bus.
Now, Pitts, on that top one, there's twenty females, but only one female chaperone. Are there some parents, or is there another school also going to that, that they'll be combining chaperones?
We, we normally have the other high schools that go, and, and sometimes the, the forms come in at different times, but I can double-check and make sure.
I thought that's what we've done in the past, but that, I just thought that's a lot of females, so it's one chaperone.
Policy is one to fifteen.
It is, it is.
But I know what he said. If you get through four schools, they might have more chaperones.
We'll, we'll make sure that that number's where it should be.
Maybe you've already approved one.
Right. Any questions on this by anybody?
Move approval, just pending that they, if we don't have other schools going, that they can add chaperones.
Second, I'll win. Okay, no more questions? In favor, say aye. If opposed to that? Thank you very much, and, yeah, I hadn't missed anything. That carries us to closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four-three dash three one eight eleven. A one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one one five C dash three twenty-one. And student records under General Statute one one five C dash four oh two and twenty U.S. Code twelve thirty-two G.
Okay, got a second, okay. Uh, I got a motion second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye. If opposed, we're in closed session. U.S. Code, I heard that.
I remembered.
Okay, we're back in open session, and our first item up, we need to approve the personnel agenda dated April fifth. We just went over.
Move approval.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye. If opposed to that, okay. Calendar for April, I don't think dates have changed, but we'll go over them right quick to make sure everybody understands when we meet again.
We're meeting today on the fifth. We got a budget session on the twelfth at four o'clock. And the governor released a little bit of information on some budgets, but we don't have firm numbers. But hopefully we'll have some more information that we can share with you on the twelfth. And then we have the monthly board meeting for the month of April on the nineteenth at five thirty. And then we have our joint meeting with the commissioners scheduled on the twenty-seventh at twelve, at noon that day.
Lisa wants to know how you want your steak.
For the meeting, I get, I get what he's talking about. I missed that. I don't know. I know, I know. Trust me, I knew it was a joke. Board member updates? Anybody have anything they'd like to share? Actually, I take that as a superintendent update.
Two things I want to mention. Stepping out, April the twenty-second, we'd like to encourage all the folks in the community to pick up tickets and support our students as they do their great performances, as they always do. And then we had an event last month that I was able to go to on a Saturday afternoon, involved students from third, fourth, and fifth grade around the county called Mathletics. And it was at John Small, and there were many people that were involved, but Leslie Holly and Catherine Bryant from John Small were the ones that were the folks behind the scenes that did a lot of the planning work. And we had a great turnout of students. We had family members there, friends, and it was just neat to see on a Saturday, when students don't have to be in school, that they were there and they were competing. And we had students from every school represented that showed up in the winter categories. And I think at each grade level, we had students that scored a perfect score on some of the assessment work that was done. So I just want to congratulate all the folks that were there, our students, the teachers, and family and friends that showed up to support them.
I was there standing with them.
Very grateful.
Okay, any last words of wisdom or not wisdom?
Happy birthday, Carolyn.
Happy birthday to Carolyn Walker. The camera's on. I would ask her, but I'm not going to.
You can sing to her, too.
Thirty, no, she's already told me twenty-nine, so. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear her second?
Second.
And Carolyn's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.